Started, okay. Okay, so if you would, Lisa, just tell us a little bit about was it a difficult decision to run again? How did you arrive at that? What's still left on your to-do list?
It wasn't a difficult decision as I'm ending the end of two terms, eight years on the school board. When I first originally got on the school board, I thought I'll do two terms. But then as we're into so much right now with the bond referendum, the school education savings accounts, there's just so much going on that I feel like I shouldn't leave now, and I don't want to leave now. I want to be involved and see this bond referendum to fruition. If it does not get approved, there's still a lot of work to do. And I want to be part of all that, and I feel like I could bring my experience, eight years on the board, to the new board for the next four years.
Right, because with a couple of incumbents going off, we will definitely be losing some experience. So, yeah, I'm sure that that's a factor. Tell us a little bit about the role you see yourself in on the board. Kind of what are your go-to issues that you really have done a lot of work around?
Right now, I'm vice president. Kate Parks is president. That's working very well. We have a very good working relationship and good communication with the whole entire board. You know, we're a strong board, so I'm going to miss the board as it is now, but there's always new people that are going to be just as good. So looking forward to that. My role initially when I got on the board was for education and activities, keeping the kids involved. And I still firmly believe that we've made progress with that. We've made a lot of progress with finding a role for the kids once they graduate. You know, walking across that state, what am I going to do? The push isn't always a four-year college for everyone. So we've incorporated a lot of a lot of ways to work with NICC and our other local community colleges to be prepared for one work when you're done with school. And also with our manufacturers, our work, our employers in Dubuque, you know, to get the kids involved. So I want to continue on that. So I very focused on that, very focused on the buildings and grounds. And then I want to see how the education savings account, we're only in year one of that. I don't, none of us know how that's going to be at the end of three years.
Right, yeah. What would you, what would you point to as maybe two or three things that be the biggest accomplishments that the district has achieved during your tenure this last term?
COVID, unfortunately, that was unexpected. But we were able to open our doors sooner than a lot of districts, keep the kids coming in person. We've also, because of COVID, we went into the area that I'm not as fond of as online learning, but we do need to offer that. We found out that that did get kids connected while they were, you know, danger of coming to school in person, but now we find that there's other reasons that there's a lot of kids out there that feel more comfortable at home. We would like them in class, that's my number one, but if not, we found a way with our technology to work with the students, the one-on-one devices. We don't have it for K through five, but every other student can take a laptop home. They can work remote. Those are the major major things in my last four years.
Is there anything, as you look back on those four years, that you would have done differently? Or maybe something that turned out differently than you would have expected?
There's always a lot of avenues to go, but I feel comfortable with the decisions I've made, and I don't regret any path that we've taken while I've been on the board. We always stick, we have a very strong board with our super, choosing, I guess, I forgot, one big accomplishment is choosing a new superintendent. Not many of us on the board ever get to experience that, and I think we made the right decision. Stan was wonderful, and that was a big project to go through. It was really, you know, uncharted territory. I think Tammy Ryan experienced that, but the rest of us have not. And I felt good about going through that. I felt good that we handled it ourselves. We did not outsource that search, and we made the right decision. So I have no regrets on any decisions that I, in selling some buildings, we sold the soccer complex, we sold Fulton School. I have no regrets on any of my decisions that I've made so far.
If the bond, if the bond issue were to pass, what do you, what would you like to see happen with Jefferson?
That it, the building gets sold to an entity that's going to keep it alive. You know, maybe it's a nursing home, maybe it's another educational space for the neighborhood kids in that area. I would like to, I don't, I'd like to see the building standing and being useful for the Dubuque community. Maybe there's childcare. There's a lot of other things that that building could be used for.
And was the decision regarding the bond issue, as I recall, the board was in unanimous agreement to move forward with that. Was there any sticking points throughout? Or did you feel like the district laid out the case really well? Or what did it take to get you over the hump to say, yep, I think we need to go for this 150 million?
I was for it from day one. And the biggest thing that took the longest was identifying a location. And we had a lot of locations on the board. And we, the architects and ourselves looked at these properties, but then came to it that Washington is in the heart of Dubuque. It is right in the middle. And it's a, it's in the senior district. So it can be a feeder school for senior high school. Hempstead can, Roosevelt can continue to be a feeder school for Hempstead, though part of the students go to senior now. It was a less evasive way to not move the school out of the outskirts of Dubuque, where there's a lot more busing, we're still considered neighborhood school with some busing. So I was all for that location and moving forward with it from day one.
What kind of, as you're out and about talking to folks or constituents, what kind of feedback are you hearing about that?
Number one is what will it do there, their personal taxes? So we already set the tax levy. That is not moving. It's the fourth lowest it's been in the last 15 years. So in the foreseeable future, we do not intend to increase that. The other thing was they're wondering, are you going to take all of Jefferson population, all of Washington population and put them in this new building? And that's a no. We want to make feeder schools to senior and Hempstead. Right now, senior and Hempstead, after the Plan C happened many years ago, it was tough for the Dubuque community, but now we have those two schools equal in every category. And that's what we want for our middle schools. So that's another thing that they're asking about. And a few people are saying, you know, you're moving all these schools away from the North End. Right now, where Washington sits, that's the heart of Dubuque. When Jefferson was built, Washington was on the outskirts. So now, you know, the, where people live, it's all migrated west. We don't want to put a school out on the West End. We already have a middle school there. And like I said, the concentration for feeder schools, Washington is the best spot. So we're not taking away a neighborhood school. I do like the neighborhood schools for the elementary level, because that is more convenient for families, where they work, where their childcare is, where they live. But middle school, high school, then you're up to another level.
Yeah. Something you said there, I was going to ask about. Well, just tell me a little bit about why, why is that feeder school model important to have? Okay, these kids move from this, this middle school to this high school. It hasn't, I mean, we had a long tradition in Dubuque where that wasn't the case. Why, why does that, what are the benefits of that model? Or why did you see that as something pretty important?
Because of what we saw with senior and Hempstead when it evolved. It, the public was not happy at first. You know, I had kids that were affected by that as well. So it was a big shock, but then as we got all the students there, the demographics is equal in every way. There's no more out in the public, oh, seniors, the, the school that I don't want to go to, or Hempstead, you know? And we're hearing a little bit about that with Jefferson and Washington. And once we get the kids together and kids work better, if they have good examples and they have all the different ethnic groups, genders, everything, when it's all equal, then they feel better. They feel like they're in a safe place. And it's going to be better for the teachers, administration, and the feeder school does. Now, you could always open enroll. If there's a student that is at Roosevelt and they're supposed to go to Hempstead, they can always ask to open enroll. So that's not being shut off. And sometimes families like to have a destination. Okay, I'm going to Roosevelt. I know I'm going to go to Hempstead then. But if they move, or there is a reason why they don't want to go to Hempstead, instead go to senior, they can open enroll. So they'll still have those options.
And what would you say to a voter who said, you know, when you mentioned people ask the question about their personal taxes? What would you respond to a voter who says, well, but, I mean, this is a 10-year process. Who knows if, how many of you are even going to be on the board five years from now? A future board could do something different. How long can I, can I hold on to this guarantee that my taxes aren't going up?
We can't. To be honest, we cannot guarantee. You know, we, our CFO is saying in the foreseeable future, we're not changing the percentage. But I can't tell you what's going to happen 10 years from now. But we do know with the older buildings, if we continue to operate the two older buildings and run three middle schools, there's going to have to be cuts somewhere. And with doing that, we're going to save 3.5 million in operating costs per year by combining the middle schools. So, and there's no, no plan of letting teachers go, letting staff go. Those things will happen naturally as people retire. We're still going to need a lot of people in these buildings. So, and we'll be able to keep the Jefferson, or the Washington kids in the old Washington building as we're building, so that will make the flow, we're not going to displace any students. But there's no guarantee, Amy. I mean, we can't. And that, what I would say is if we, if this does not happen, there most likely is a guarantee that there will have to be changes and cutbacks somewhere. And it won't be as favorable as building a new school. Have we identified those yet? No.
Okay. Go ahead, Allie or Mike, if you want to jump in.
Yeah, so I'm going to stay on that same theme, Lisa, because that is the thing that I probably hear the most from, from people in the community is, yeah, well, my, they say my taxes aren't going to change, at least the tax levy today. But I know how this is going, and I'm paraphrasing what I'm hearing. I know how this is going to go. We're going to vote for it, and then boom, our taxes are going to go up. So how do you overcome that with messaging?
We have the yes group that's educating everyone. I think they're doing a very good job. So people that, there's one more meeting, October 18th. I encourage them, we could even put it, I don't know, put it in the newspaper, October 18th. You know, go to that last meeting and ask those questions to the experts that are answering these questions on a daily basis. I just know that if we don't do something with our buildings, like we sold Fulton, we sold the soccer complex, we can't continue to maintain older buildings, and we don't know what's going to happen with the population. It's coming down. We hope efforts to build Dubuque continue. And with this new middle school will be room, we can always take more expansion. But right now, with the education savings accounts and the funding, I can't guarantee, but the guarantee that the CFO told us is in the foreseeable future. He's not going, he set the budget. It's the lowest it's been in 15 years to operate. And we'll see the operating costs go down with the new building. And it's going to be more efficient, more efficiently run. It costs a lot for these old buildings. Nor, they don't have air conditioning. So if we end up, it doesn't pass, then there's two more schools we have to air condition.
And I know that the mountain is that it's not a simple majority. It's 60% plus one vote, but that has always been a challenge in Dubuque. So is there a plan B if, if the bond doesn't pass?
Try again next year. You know, I thought we were very prepared this time. You know, we've had a lot of citizens that took the reins and are become leaders and, and spreading the news and educating the public. If it doesn't pass, we, I'm certain that we'll go for it again next year. But then the, the costs are going to be up too. So, you know, we looked at Washington, Roosevelt Middle School, I think it was 29 million or 39 million when that was built. That building is 18, 19 years old. Now it's 110 million. So the longer we wait, it's going to cost a lot more.
So would the plan, if it doesn't pass, would the plan be to go back and ask for basically the same plan, you know, next year? Or is there a thought that we'd have to, okay, clearly at 100, what is it, 105 million? That's, that's maybe more than the community can absorb or wants to absorb. So here's the $80 million plan, or is that part of the thought process?
Well, how it breaks down is 150 million will cover all the bullet points that we wanted to. 110, 105 to 110 is just for the middle school. If we didn't ask for those other things right now, it would be a very, very, very long time before we could do any other improvements or big projects. So finishing air conditioning, which is very important to the students and Dubuque in the schools that don't have it. Baseball, softball, that's been on our radar for years and years. And we threw that in there so we could have some money. Because if we don't ask for these things now, it's going to be tough to ask for more money later. And that's the last thing the public wants to see is, okay, you just asked for 110 million to do the middle school. Now you want to do baseball fields. Now you want to finish air conditioning. Why didn't you ask for it to begin with? So that's why, and we, with these five categories, hopefully, the public, they're passionate about at least one or two of those areas, and will say yes.
Well, and the Eisenhower piece, I assume, I mean, that would, that needs to be addressed one way or another, right?
Yes, yes. And so that's very important. That's the biggest elementary school. And they're using it, which years ago you did, you used your cafeteria and your gym place as the same. But now there's so many activities, so much going on in the schools, that that space, that activity space is so important to have for these kids. And we're trying to be equitable with all our buildings, that they all have the same offerings. And that's why it's so important with the middle schools, have the same offerings as Roosevelt does. I apologize, my phone's ringing, but I don't know how to shut that down. Can you hear that? Are you there?
Yeah, that's okay.
Okay. Okay.
Go ahead, Allie. I think you probably got something to ask.
Yeah, I would, my question I would ask is, you know, there, that you, eight years, you've, you voted on a lot of things. You know, oftentimes when the school board votes, you know, you guys do a good job of coming to a consensus and often reaching a unanimous decision. Are there times when you, that you can think of when you, you've differed from the majority of the board? You know, that are things that you would stand behind or point to as sort of, you know, being a person who has a voice who's like, hey, when I, when I think something is right, when I think something's right for the students, for the taxpayers, you know, that I'll, that I'll stick with that. Are there, are there times when you've differed from the majority on the board that you can point to that, that you're proud of, that you stick with?
I think spelling the complex, we were split. There was a couple that didn't want to sell the complex to the court one. And with the mask, there was different views on that between the board. I was on the side that, you know, it went the way that I voted. But we're, we want a board with seven different individuals. It's good to have, you know, I learn from people that don't think the same way I do, as they probably do from me. So I wouldn't want a board that we're always in unison. And we do have discussions that aren't always saw, and they're at the elementary education, the education facility meeting and the facility meetings, committee meetings, I should say, that we don't all see eye to eye. But after, you know, we all have ears that we listen. So it's good that we're good listeners, and we don't have to always agree.
I wanted to ask too about the issue of the reading materials that we're putting in front of kids. And we had the issue last year, it was kind of two, two ends of the spectrum that ended up in the same place. Last year, within the district, there was a decision to pull some books out from the classroom curriculum where they were being read aloud because it was making some kids uncomfortable because of some of the dated language and things like that. Other end of the spectrum, of course, we have, you know, the governors, the legislature's decision to empower parents and making it somewhat complicated for schools to figure out what books they're allowed to, you know, to carry. How, where do you fall on that issue? How do you see the district navigating those waters going forward?
The superintendent informed us at the end of the, by the end of the summer, there was a group, a diverse group of people. It wasn't just all language arts teachers. It was all different teachers that were in this group that made decisions on books. So we, we had different points of view. Those that we suspect might be on the radar of being, you know, not allowed in the school, we might set aside, we don't take them out, but it might not be the first choice for the classroom to use. So, but I'm also a parent and a citizen that you got to read the good with the bad. Now, inappropriate language being read out loud, yes, the teachers can find different ways to present the material, I think. You know, find a different way that it's not going to embarrass someone. And that can be with every subject matter, how you present it. But then to not let the students, age appropriate, of course, be involved to listen to both points of view. I don't, I don't like where some places are going, you know, banning a lot of things that maybe they should hear, that they should hear the truth. They should listen when we're in a controlled environment like a school. They're with teachers and counselors. It's better to hear different things in those environments than out in the streets. And they'll might hear it both places, but if they hear it in a controlled environment, they're going to feel better educated and not to be embarrassed, because they're going to hear it at the same time as everyone else does. So then they can talk to their families. Parents should be involved. If there is some materials that they don't want their student to be involved with, they can always opt out of that. They can opt for a different book. They can opt out of, you know, I know teaching health in the middle schools. You know, if a parent doesn't want their student to hear that in the big classroom, they can opt out of that and do a different approach that works for them. So that's where the parents still have control. But to have control over someone else's kid and someone else's ideas, that I think we are a public school, we have to be there for everyone. And everyone has a different point of view, but just have the outlet that those that are truly against something, that they can quietly do it their way.
And remind me again, so your kids went through school, are your kids out of the public school system now, or?
Oh, yeah, I have five grandkids.
Okay, and are they in Dubuque, or are they in the system, or no?
One is in Dubuque. I had one, she went to the public school, then she went to Jefferson, then she went to Waller for high school. The other ones went public the whole way. And we had, we had touched Jefferson, Roosevelt, Washington, senior, Hempstead, Hoover, Kennedy.
Wow.
And they're all products, they're all doing very well. They had great education. They all love. And the reason they went to so many different schools, we lived in, my husband and I built not four different houses, so we moved a lot. And we tried to send our kids to the district that they were at, where we lived. And then when Gary decided to leave Lawrence College, he was there 17 years and started teaching at Washington Middle School. Then our youngest two boys were just entering middle school. And then we decided to open enroll them to Washington where Gary was teaching, because it was easier, he could bring them to school. And then 100% of those kids went to senior. My twins were still at Hempstead. They loved Hempstead, so we left them where they were at. So we had a good experience at all the schools.
Do you think that, you've obviously had a lot of history with the district and with your husband's role and everything. Do you think it's more difficult to be a teacher today than it was 10, 15 years ago?
I've never been a teacher, but living with a teacher and I have a lot of friends that are teachers and coaches, I think it is more difficult. It's more the discipline. The kids are, their DNA is still the same. They're still a boy, a girl, they're going to school, they got families at home, siblings. But it's the discipline and maybe feeling more empowered to, you can't tell me not to do something. You know, years ago, you were kind of, you know, that teacher, that principal, you were like fearful of. No matter what they said, you had to do it, and you did not want to cross them. Now kids have more autonomy, they feel. I don't, I can't explain it, but I feel like it's more the discipline. And so, yes, it's hard for a teacher. What can I say? What can I do? And you don't learn those tricks. My husband was very good at that with discipline, but he was a seasoned teacher. So you don't learn all those things in college or when you're a student teaching. It's going to take a few years of experience being in the trenches for that teacher to figure out, oh, this is how I'm going to handle these situations.
And is there, do you think there's anything that the board, the school board can do to support teachers?
What's happening more now is there paraprofessionals. It used to be you'd say, I want to be a paraprofessional. Okay, what school do you want to go to? Here you are. Here's your assignment. We're having better training before they step into that world of being a paraprofessional. So having more training with them, and then maybe it's not a good fit. Maybe we paired them at a cer, or let them choose what school they want. But maybe they're with a certain age group, and it's just not working out. Instead of letting them quit, we're saying, well, what age group would you like? Or what type of student or area would you want to be in? So we're trying to shift people around. And so they don't leave and that they feel better, with any job. You hire someone and you think, well, I hired him for this job. But then you find out six months later or a year later, oh, they'd be a better fit over here. So instead of losing that employee, you want to move them and find the right fit for them. And we have to prepare them. So our brand-new teachers, they're having co-teachers with them and having more, you have teacher leadership. So there's more reaching out to help these new people. And the, Amy Hawkins, she's, you know, it's always good when you have a superintendent that's been through the trenches. She was a teacher, she was a coach, she was HR, athletic director. She's been in the trenches and all those areas, so she knows how those people feel and how important it is to get them the right training and the right environment for them. So that we're working harder for that. Go ahead, if you guys have a question.
Everything that I was going to ask, you've asked, Amy. You ought to be an editor.
I appreciate, hey, tell Bob Woodward, I loved his editorial on why newspaper. Why, you know, it should be funded. I buy the paper. I read it every night. It's harder to read on my phone, so I miss Mondays, but I read it on Mondays. But I love.
Tablet, it's bigger.
I know, I will. But my kids have to show me how to do that better. I really love that you guys do this, that you're getting, asking these questions. And that's what we need, is people to be informed and ask the tough questions. Hopefully, we have the answers. And I'm looking forward to if I'm voted in for another four years of being on school board again. And I love also that the twist that the newspaper of the district, I don't know who's the ringleader on this, that we're also trying to shout out all the good things. There's so much negativity in the world that the articles that are coming out now of the good things toot our horns. We have to continue to do. We have to continue to do that. And the school's trying to make an effort for that too, with articles that are in the newspaper.
Yeah, that, that's great, yeah. Appreciate that. Well, Allie, did, did you have anything else, or are you good?
I, I think that you hit a lot of things we were going to ask. I guess I, I, my one thing would be, you know, we've talked a lot about like, you know, books and the bond issue and, and things like that. I mean, are there any other issues you see the district kind of facing or navigating in the next handful of years that, that you think we need to prepare for, that, that you want to have a hand in?
Um, one thing that we just started with inclement, inclement weather. You know, they just rolled out that the governor said we could have five remote days for bad weather. So if the weather is kind of iffy, then we can say, okay, this is a remote day. All the students have their laptops, the elementaries, they have packets that they can work on. Now if the weather, and then all the staff, every single person that is employed with the schools will show up for work. There'll be work that they can do, there'll be more training for them, doing some things that, hey, they didn't get time to do during the week. So they will all report to work. We're even making it available if there's some teachers that have some young school age kids, not toddlers, but school age that should have been in school. And now the parent is like, what do I do, I don't have a place for my kid. They can bring them to school, we're going to try and have someone supervise them while the parents can do their thing. So we're always trying to find better ways to connect and make it easier for the parents. So to bring kids to school, and if the weather's really bad, then we're going to cancel it. So it's going to be a little tricky, I think, because we'll say, well, this is a remote day, or this is a completely canceled day. If it's a completely canceled day, we have to make it up. But if it's a remote day, we don't. So I like that solution, and soon as that became available, our superintendent jumped on that and said, we're going to do this. So it'll be trial and error, we'll see how it works. But we have people in the district that are willing to try. We have a great IT department. Technology is doing wonderful. I know a lot of money spent on technology, but it's so important. There's all kind, you know, we're not afraid to jump and, and try something that's going to benefit the safety and education of our kids and our staff.
Has, has a conversation ever been had at the board level about artificial intelligence in terms of like a, a kid that could use one of the chat bots to, to write a paper for them? It seems like that's going to get harder and harder to.
I know. Um, that's a problem that the English department would have, the language arts, yes. My good friend of my husband's is a language arts teacher. And I hate to see that happen, because, yeah, artificial intelligence, my kids play around with that once in a while, but they're all older. I don't want to see us lose the ABCs, the curse off, the, you know, doing your own research, writing a longhand. I don't want to lose that when you're younger, because those skills benefit you when you get older. So I, I don't like to see a lot of shortcuts in education. We've always stuck, another topic was phonics. Our school, there was a time when phonics went out the window, you don't teach that way. Well, now it's coming back, we never gave it up. So those old fashioned fundamentals, everyone needs that base. And then when they get older, they can make their decisions on how they do things. If they don't have that base, they don't have the, the good mind to make those good decisions.
Okay. Anything I should know in terms of your background? Are you in the same line of work as you were four years ago, or what, what are you doing these days?
I'm a vice president at Fidelity Bank and Trust. I do mortgage loans, consumer loans. I've been banking all my adult life.
Okay, that's what I thought, just wanted to make sure, so, okay.
My husband's retired from teaching.
Yeah, I thought, I thought that I knew he was retired. I couldn't, I knew the coaching thing, we'd written something about that, but I wasn't sure about the.
He's now teaching, or he had his exercise class called SWEL, older people, my age now. Up at University of Dubuque, he has 200 SWEL people, part of his class. And then he's also teaching two courses to the college students at UD.
Yeah, that's great.
He's loving life.
Good for him. So, well, we appreciate your time and sharing your thoughts and insights with us. Of course, we'll still have a reporter be reaching out to you for the, the news side of things. I think that's, that likely be Elizabeth, and she'll.